Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Welcome to our Minnehaw County Commission meeting. I'm going to call our meeting to order. If you need a listening device, see one of our county staff. Meeting documents are on the end by Commissioner Hyburger, and they're also available in the auditor's office during normal business hours. If you've got one of these, please silence it. And look for a motion to approve our agenda.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Benega, second by Hyburger. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. I look for a motion to approve the commission meeting minutes for November 16th, 2021.
Make a motion to approve. Bender?
Second. Benega?
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We have bills, $5,015,613.81.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Reports available from the Minnehaw County Emergency Management Services for the third quarter of 2013. And we'll move on to personnel actions and look for a motion to approve routine personnel.
Motion to approve routine action. Second. Bender?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Personnel actions approved. Look for, we're looking to consider a motion to approve a salary increase. Good morning, Carrie, for Amber Whittington, Deputy Public Defender, from pay grade step 22, step three to step four. Please.
Good morning. This is a result of our recent attorney pay review. As Tracy was reviewing the salary lineup for her staff, she realized this potential change for Amber to better reflect the qualifications and skills that she brought in last year when she was hired. So the request is simply to adjust her by one step.
Questions? Motions? Make a motion to approve the step increase.
Second?
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. No applications for abatement. We have a FEMA letter of flood map revision for effective March 23rd, 2022, for the community of Hartford. I looked at it. Don't think it's going to impact a lot. We have planning and zoning notices, no planning and zoning notices, and no petitions for compromise lien, so we are at the opportunity for public comment. Is there anybody here that would like to address the commission about a non-agenda item? Seeing nobody rushing for the microphone, we'll move on to our regular business. We have a public hearing to consider a rezone from A1 to the I-1 light industrial district. Good morning, Scott.
Good morning, Scott Anderson, Planning Director. And this is an item that has been before the Planning Commission. Just a brief overview, it's a request to rezon some property in Corson, directly on the north side of the railroad tracks, and it is on South Dakota Highway 11. It consists of a size, a 1.6 acre lot. There's currently a residence there, and I believe that eventually they're going to redevelop it into some commercial light industrial use. I can show you a couple pictures. It had, this is the location, as I indicated, there is a residence to the north. Midwest Railcar is to the west. Sweetman's gravel pit is to the east. To the south is also industrial. There's storage units and a bar there. So it is a developing commercial area. This is the house that's there. And you can, this is looking directly south from the driveway. You can see the, the commercial activity that's occurring to the south. You can see the railroad tracks. This is looking to the east, and you can see the mining activity that's occurring. This is the house that's directly to the north of the property, and this is Midwest Railcar that's on the other side of the property. So Planning Commission recommended approval. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have, and go from there.
Commissioner Hyburger?
I have a couple, Scott. Thank you.
Okay.
So the, next door to this place, there is a home, and so what is that zoned?
That's zoned A1 agriculture.
Okay. And then next to that is another property, and is that light industrial?
Yes.
Okay. And is the, has there been any concerns from the one property owner who's A1 agriculture? Has he raised any issues to you?
No.
Okay.
They didn't attend the meetings.
Okay.
They didn't attend the Planning Commission hearing, and they have not heard anything from them.
And just for a listening audience, can you tell a little bit about what might be on light industrial?
Well, light industrial can allow generally light manufacturing uses. It can also allow any, any uses that are in the C1 commercial zoning district. So you could have like, commercial uses, some commercial uses. What's, what is ideal about this property is it is adjacent to a railroad tracks. It's just very small. It's really only 1.6 acres, which is hard to put much of a, a large development in for sure, but it is probably best suited for industrial uses, given its location on a highway and railroad, so.
I actually happened to be on this property earlier this summer, probably in like June, and went home and said, this is not, I don't, I wouldn't want to live right here. So I totally understand the reason why.
It's a rental property right now. They're using it for, the owner doesn't live there, so.
Other questions? I have one. Are there any residences in Corson?
Yeah, there's quite a few. When you move a little further to the south, between this site and the interstate, there's quite a few houses
Okay.
that are in there.
Okay. I have to get, I haven't been out there in a while, so it just seems like Corson is turning into an industrial complex.
Well, yes, there's a lot of industrial uses, or there's a large industrial complex there between what, well, just off the interstate there, and it's likely to grow in the future as well.
Alrighty. Since this is a public hearing, is there anybody here that would like to speak in favor of this rezone? Anybody that would like to speak in opposition to this rezone? Alrighty. I'll turn it over to the commission.
Motion to approve the rezon. Second?
Motion by Hyburger, second by Bender. Call or roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Urski?
Aye. Motion carries. Alright. We have a couple presentations this morning. We'll start with the presentation by Southeastern Behavioral Health and Chris Graham. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for, can you hear me? I'm really loud even without it. So, thank you for having us here today. We really truly appreciate the funding and support that we receive from the county commissioners. This year, having COVID has truly been a whole different picture for us of serving people. We have received over a thousand more mental health clients that needed our service due to depression, anxiety, and the effects of COVID. This year, we provided over $10 million in services to the residents of Minnehaw County. And so we've seen an increase in that also, about what we're available to do. So with that, I just want you to know how much we appreciate your support. And I have Kim Hansen and Deb Faini here with me today. They're going to talk about a couple of our programs. Thank you.
Morning.
Good morning. Happy Thanksgiving week. I'm Kim. So I manage the Mobile Crisis Team for Southeastern. And let me advance the slide. So today, I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the purposes of calling the Mobile Crisis Team for individuals who are experiencing a crisis. Some people just don't respond well to authority, and having an individual show up in street clothes to talk with them about a situation that may be going on in their life where they are in a crisis is more comforting to them. All of the staff that we have that serve on the Mobile Crisis Team are trained mental health professionals. They are used to working with individuals who are experiencing a crisis. And it allows the person who is in crisis to talk about what may be going on with them and move past their crisis. And this way, too, if they're able to express what their concerns are, the likelihood of them being able to remain in their home, to be with their children, their pets, to go to school or work the next day, is a lot less traumatic for them versus having to go to an inpatient psychiatric treatment facility. So once Mobile Crisis arrives on scene, the Mobile Crisis Team member works with that individual and talks to them about what has caused them to be in this crisis, and really gives them the opportunity to be heard and talk through what is going on in their life. From there, we offer resources that may help that individual. And then to the next day after we have met with an individual, we give them a call, check in, see how they're doing, and again, talk to them about what types of services may we offer to you that will help you move forward from this crisis so that you're not continuing to feel this way or be experiencing the crisis. So the great thing about Mobile Crisis is that psychiatric units are at capacity. And so it is difficult to get individuals hospitalized. And so by allowing them to be heard and come up with a satisfactory safety plan, it alleviates unnecessary hospitalizations. And two, by Mobile Crisis coming in and meeting with these individuals who are having crisis situations, it allevies law enforcement from having to stay and work with the individual in their home. And so then they're able to move on to other calls that they may have in queue. So Chris talked about COVID a little bit and how it impacted everyone, really. Our numbers for Mobile Crisis were actually down last year. So we had a total of 358 calls, 304 of which we responded to, meaning that we declined 54 of those calls. And there are certain reasons for declining calls, such as if the situation is too serious, there's too many red flags. There is a time and a place for, where somebody should go to the hospital. I don't ever want to give the impression that nobody ever needs to be hospitalized for a psychiatric reason, because that's not the case. If the, law enforcement does not have probable cause, if they don't have a reason to be meeting with that individual and considering putting them in the hospital for a psychiatric reason, then Mobile Crisis shouldn't be going out and meeting with that individual either. One question that I do frequently get asked is about juveniles. And we do meet with juveniles on Mobile Crisis. With that, there does have to be a guardian present to sign a consent to say that it's okay for us to talk to that minor child. And so we do meet with children. We always have. We've been in operation for 10 years now, and so that has always been the case. We also had 11 people who opted to go to the hospital on a voluntary basis versus staying home or be taken on a hold. Five individuals went to a detoxification center or other referral source. And then 23 of the individuals that we met with did go ahead and go to the hospital on mental illness holds. And so we're still at a 92.45% diversion rate, which is very high. That is the number of individuals that we were safely able to leave at home. And then as you can see, our highest referral source is still the Sioux Falls PD, with 277 of the 304 calls coming from the Sioux Falls PD. Any questions about Mobile Crisis? Okay, well, I will hand it over to Debbie Faini.
Hello?
Good morning.
Good morning. So we're headed into our fifth year of our community, excuse me, our community partnership with the Public Defender's Office.
You just identify yourself for everybody.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Debbie Faini. So I'm the Alternative Sentencing Specialist with the Community Partnership between Mental, Minnehaw County Public Defender's Office and Southeastern Directions for Life. The program was created to provide the lawyers with positive alternatives, increase rehabilitation, and then decrease incarceration costs, along that the client's economic self-sufficiency. So they're able to stay out of jail, get a job, pay their debts. So, excuse me, we have had, since the program started, over 1,400 referrals into the program. Most of those referrals turn into evaluations, such as a mental health, chemical dependency, or maybe both, and then domestic violence evaluations, which is something new that I'll go over in a little bit. If the client is recommended for some type of a treatment program, we also help them get that set up and help them acquire a bed date for treatment. Once, once they become a client, the individuals will have access to case management, psychiatry, recovery services, employment connections, and then our benefit specialist who helps them with either appealing for their SSI, SSDI, or SSI. So, talking a little bit about our new program, which we have just started as the Domestic Violence Program. It was recently brought to my attention that there was clients sitting in jail that needed domestic violence evaluations. So we stepped up, got our staff trained, and we now provide that service. We've had 40 referrals so far. Once client is out of jail, then they can roll right into our programming. We have two domestic violence MRT classes. One is a low risk and a high risk, which then they get the class, but also individual therapy.
What's MRT?
Moral Recognition Therapy.
Okay.
So these classes run for about, run for 26 weeks. And like I said, we currently have two programs going at this time. So we recently had our fourth annual fundraiser, and we look forward to having another year of community partnership with the Minnehaw County Public Defender's Office. Any questions?
Commissioner Bender?
I'm curious on the MRT, Domestic Violence MRT classes. Do you guys have any statistics about how successful that program is, how the graduates tend to do after the 26 weeks?
Well, it's new to our program, so I don't have any statistics so far.
Okay. Do you want?
Yes. In order to do the domestic violent program, we had to get certified with a national firm to be able to do this work. MRT is something we chose because we're already trained in MRT. We use a lot of that for the juvenile justice programs, and it was a good fit. But actually, having statistics, we don't have that yet.
Okay.
That's why we chose that.
Commissioner Hyburger?
Two things. I think nationally, there would be some statistics on how effective MRT is. And so we could probably find that out, just because we have been using the juvenile side for a while, too.
Yes, for a long time, yes.
And the other thing is, I was just going to, you know, say thank you for your presentation and the work that you done, have done, because like the Mobile Crisis Team got started when Commissioner Benega, Benega and I were on and started out as a pilot program and just as, you know, exploded. And it has been huge, saving staff time, saving people, like you said, from going to the hospital or emergency rooms and getting checked in. It has just really been good for both clients and, and for law enforcement. And then also the Public Defender, Alternative Sentencing Program. I think we've probably had about five years? I'm guessing.
We just started our fifth year.
Yeah, about five years. And, and that also has been a huge benefit to our Public Defender's Office, because now our attorneys are not trying to make all these decisions. They're trying to take care of their clients in their cases and not trying to, to figure out how to, how to set them up with housing or whatever else. We have somebody else to do it. And so both have been really great programs for us. And so I thank you for what you are doing for Minnehaw County residents.
How many weeks has that domestic violence program been running? You said it's new.
We, it's been running for about five weeks.
Oh, that, that recent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Commissioner Bender?
I was just curious, is that a program that got transferred from another nonprofit over to you guys? That's just something new that you?
It's just something new that we started.
Okay, alright.
So are the, Commissioner, no, go ahead, Commissioner Benega. Do the judges refer people to the program that you're talking about? Is it a requirement for them to attend classes? And there's, is there frankly, an evaluation at the very end? And gets reported back to the judicial system?
Yes. So we do get the referrals from judges, but we also get them for maybe a probation officer, parole officer, whoever's involved, excuse me, in their case. And they do have to follow through with the programming, and it does, the report does go back to the state.
You have to make sure you speak in the microphone, because we have a listening audience. Sorry.
That's okay. So yes, we do get the referrals from the judges, but also from probation officers, parole officers. And then they do have to follow through with the programming, and it's reported back to the state.
And when Avera gets their facility built for the juvenile area, if you will, is that going to be something that you're going to be able to request as a resource?
In the juvenile world, we haven't started doing the domestic, anything with the domestic part of it with the juveniles.
Okay. So you had mentioned that these individuals are sitting in jail. So if, if they're in the program, are they released from custody at that point? Or do, is this a program they do while they're incarcerated?
At this time, it's, they start the program once they're released from jail.
Okay.
So once the judges realize that, or know that there's a program that they can get into right away, it does help with getting them sentenced and out.
Okay. Alrighty. Obviously, we're interested. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to a presentation from the Minnehaw Con, Minnehaw Conservation District. And John? Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Thank you for offering us the opportunity to come and information, give you guys information. John Parker, Conservation, Minnehaw Conservation District Manager, 2408 East Benson Road is our office and where we make our home at. So, and then again, as in the past, we thank you for the funding that's available, that we receive and the support. Not always as a monetary, and I think we've talked about this many times at other meetings here or whatever, is we do get a lot of in-kind match stuff, because we are an entity of the state, and like we get the gas through the county pumps out there and stuff, and things like that, and we buy our herbicides and stuff. So things are, it's a good cooperating of operations. So we thank you for that. So, but, so since going through, we'll go through a little bit, give you a quick rundown. We've been around since 1942. This is a down arrow. Okay. So, in the mission statement for the district, promote the sustainable use of natural resources through responsible stewardship by providing quality services and education to the surrounding community. So that, that picture there is just east of the interstate up here, right from the office. It will be changing shortly, because they've already sold it, and it's, so most of the trees will be gone, and everything will be reshaped to become industrial up there. So, but that picture there was holes on that. So, so these are the services the district offers throughout, for the county in the surrounding area. If we do do work in other counties, we have an agreement that we work with the other districts. And most of the time, if we do that, it's because they don't offer the service. So on there. Pretty much everything's been there. Our drills, 12-foot, 15, and 30. We did work with, our drills, we seeded 4,200 acres so far this year. We're doing dormant seeding today and next week, if the weather permits. That's spread out over all three different, four different drills in there. Moving on, just pictures of shelter belts, past what they do for the winter, not only in the winter to summer, but here's one where we, how we start tractor and tiller. We break in ground on that. We're doing sod on the, today, one of the guys is out doing some work, ripping the ground, getting them for up, ready for next spring. So this nice fall we've had has given us opportunity to get a lot of work done. So, so there's a, in there. And there's one, this, those are all for this last spring, this one here. It's hard to see the tree row in the picture on the left, but you can make it out. But then when you see where it's got the fabric, it kind of straightens it out there. But those are, that's the beginning. And then as the summer went, that's one of the field technicians there. And those trees coming out of the tubes are the first year growth. The tree tubes do promote a lot of rapid growth and also protection from rabbits and deer. So you can get some pretty good growth if you participate through that program. So, and cover crops with the farmers in the area. Put them in for various regions. Soil health is one. The other is for alternative food supply for the fall. And there's a couple of new ones came out this fall that will go dormant for the winter and then come back up in the spring to give them a good caving area and plus spring feed when they don't, can't get out the pasture right away. So there's some new amendments incumbent in that. They're probably not considered new, but they're just new mixes and recipes. So, so on there. And then we work with the community. We work with the city. We work with the county. There's a, got a list of them coming up. This is just a project. We work with Land Scape Garden Center, early spring. We also participated with them in, them in Journey in the Veteran Cemetery up there and getting the grass seeded. There's much more work to do there over the years, but some of that. So, we also worked with the state Game Fish and Parks and Eagle Sun Project down there at Blood Run. We seeded in 100 acres of native, native grass this year. And it's got wildflowers, natives, and forbs. It'll be a nice area coming up. So. In our educational outreach, we got the Dewey Gevek Outdoor Learning Area. We won't talk too much on that one. Hopefully, can come back in January with a sketch of plans and a layout that we're going to try to move forward with, and you guys can take a look at that. The land judging, that did go on last fall and this fall. And last year, we had six, 202 kids, and this year, we had 265 kids. Participated at a farm south of Brandon, and this is the day shot. It was a beautiful day. And nine, was it, 21 schools from nine surrounding counties came to that. And then speech contest, the water festival. Last year, we held that. That's the Sioux Emperor Water Festival. Major donors on that one are supporters of the city of Sioux Falls, East Dakota Rural Water, and then there's a list of other ones. And then the Conservation District. But we did a virtual one last year. Everything was done that way. And this year, we're going to run it both ways. USF is allowing us to be on campus, so the schools that can come will. The other ones will have to do it virtual. So, on there, and do that one. And then we, we're fortunate enough, a year and a half ago, to get a three-year grant with NRCS, and we created with the city, NRCS and the Conservation District, the Urban Conservation Educating, Education Coordinator position. And that's going well. That person works out of the Environmental Center down at the base of the hill here in town, and then works with the district, NRCS, and the city on local projects in the community and throughout the county, not just Sioux Falls. Additional successes, the coordinator, as we talked about, we got a CIS grant, working with Sustainable Agriculture Initiatives. We got Dakota Fresh. They, about a year and a half ago, we contacted them. They contacted us because our tree cooler, we use it from mid-April to mid-June, and that's the only time of the year it gets used. So then we shut it down, clean it out, and it sits there. And they needed a place to bring their produce so they can stage it weekly for deliveries throughout the, the area. So there's 17 producers that come there with food, and it's all prepackaged and everything. All they have to do is just put it into orders. And I think they cover like 17 or 18 stops in the town and deliver it one day a week. So that makes you send there. So, so overall, we've had good, last five years have been very good for the district. And last year was a good one, and this one's looking like leading into a good one for next year. So, these are our partners, and there's probably some we missed, but quite extensive. And everybody's working, working well together, and we just appreciate it. So, and our website's minnehawcd.org, or on Facebook. We got email and our phone number. So.
All right. Thank you, John. Any questions for me?
Any questions?
Commissioner Bender?
So I'm just curious, can you tell us what land judging is?
Yeah. It's, it's soil judging is really what it is. They, we dig profile pits.
Okay.
And then the FFA students come from surrounding FFA organizations and from the schools. And then they judge the type of soils. And then there's a list of questions, whether it'd be suitable to farm, whether it'd be suitable to build a house on, if it's in the floodplain. You know, so it gives them some recognition on what it could be used for. And then they got to do a slope and check and see if you should build a house there, if you shouldn't, or if it's good for farming and those practices. So.
Great.
Yep. We do that every year, and we usually try to find a producer in the county that allows us to use 10, 12 acres and dig four pits. And we dig them, and we get a couple local implement dealers, provide the equipment. We dig them. implement dealers provide the equipment. We dig them. And then the students come for a half a day, stay there, and then do all that. Then we score the cards and they get their rewards. And then it's training for them for the national champion competition in Kansas City. So.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, any other questions?
Commissioner Bennega.
Just one quick one. I know you work with FFA. Do you do any joint programming with 4H by chance?
We, we have. We do some of that through the Water Festival.
Okay.
With the Sioux Empire Water Festival. They have, some of the 4H are on the committee, the 4H leaders.
Okay.
And stuff. We work there. Some of the other, we haven't really worked in the community as far as outreach. And probably mainly is probably because of just lack of manpower to be able to get something started and keep something going. So, but yeah. We'd be interested to do it or try to keep it, you know, if we have more contacts. So.
John, what would a average or typical citizen of Minnehaha County contact your office about?
Oh, they would, if they, well, one, if they got question on trees, just on their property, we can give, we can either answer the questions or we'll forward it to the Department of Ag to their foresters. And the second one would be is if they have bought property, built a house, we can help them with the types of grasses to put in if they want to do something other than an alternative regular yard. We got native grasses and trees and bushes and stuff like that. And then if you're into wildlife, recreation, hunting, we can help you with the opportunity to plant the right food plots in the right spot, put the right grasses in, put the right trees in, and.
Do you have programs to help them buy like trees for shelter belts and that type of thing?
There's, there's some through CRP and NRCS. There's a couple of programs through Game Fish and Parks that allow things. You just have to call and ask and then put the questions in, and then we see if they qualify. So there's a couple three. And then we've got a couple of grants. We've got one grant finishing up, and then we will write one for next year for native grass planting and pollinators. So if you have small acreages, and that one will basically be designed for small acreage people that won't qualify for farm programs. Because there's some that, a lot of that will equip an NRCS and CRP, but the small guy that has five acres or two or one, but they still want to put native grass and a pollinator spot in, and we can design that and help them get it done. So.
Good answer. Thank you.
Yep. So, thank you.
You bet. Moving on to a briefing on the medical cannabis dispensary application issue timeline. Good morning, Ben.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ben Kite, Auditor's Office. Yeah, so I want to give you a briefing on our medical cannabis dispensary application issuance process. As you recall, back in October, first, part of October, you passed the ordinance 60-21 to be effective October 25th, allowing the issuance of one medical cannabis dispensary for Minnehaha County. The ordinance called for the auditor to set the process for accepting the applications and then randomly selecting those applications for review and then presenting that randomly selected application for approval for the commission. So today, I'm going to set forth my, our timeline, at least our tentative timeline at this point. So today, yes, I'm, sorry, I have a notification here to the commission. Later today, we would then post that, our notice of application period on our website. And then we'd follow that up with the, also include the application for people to complete. We then expect to issue some sort of press release today to make sure it's widely known by the public of our intent. We would follow up with a publication in the newspapers on the 29th. Our application deadline would begin on December 13th. And, or, we're not beginning, sorry, the application, we'd begin accepting applications on the 29th, and then our application deadline would end on December 13th, a two-week period. And so we would also follow that up. We'd publish a notice on, in the, about how we're going to select, randomly select the applications. So we expect that we'll get a number of applications in randomly. We will have some process where we, you know, number those and then make a selection of those to find out who would be the first application chosen. And then we'll spend 60 days reviewing the applications to make sure they comply with the ordinance. That period of time is what's set out in the ordinance. We may, that may take us less time than 60 days. If that's the case, we, our, our review period would just be shorter. And, but, you know, if we use the full 60 days, we would come back with the selected applications that qualify, that one that was randomly selected, we present to you for your review and hopefully approval. But again, that time period could be shorter. So that's kind of our proposed process that we're going to go with. You know, we open any questions you might have on this?
Well laid out. Questions for Ben. Commissioner Bender.
I'm just curious, primarily for the viewing public, it's been relatively public that the City of Sioux Falls just went through their process. Do you anticipate that although the timeline is slightly pushed back, that it's a pretty similar process that we'll be following?
Yeah, I think so. I think we've kind of built the process, you know, using their, theirs is kind of a template.
Okay. Thank you.
Alrighty. This is a briefing, and I think well done. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
All right. A briefing on the canceled invitation for bids. Steve Groan. I missed one.
I missed one.
Briefing on alcohol beverage compliance check failures. Morning, Susan. Thank you, Kim.
Susan Beeman with the Auditor's Office. Just wanted to brief you on the fact that last week, the Sheriff's Department notified the Auditor's Office of a, of the results of a recent compliance check. They reviewed 63 licenses for compliance with the, the requirements of those licenses, and eight of those locations failed, two of which were Minnehaha County issued alcohol licenses, which were the Monarch Lounge and the Safari Bar and Grill. We just wanted to notify you of that failure and make you aware that next fall, they'll be required to come in for a public hearing prior to their license being reissued. We have our, member of our Sheriff's Department here if you have any questions on the compliance check, if you have other questions for that, for him.
Commissioner Hyber.
I just had one that I raised yesterday, and I don't know if you'll have my answer today or if you even heard it, was, I'm just wondering, how many failures have we had in Minnehaha County in the last few years? I mean, I just don't think that it's been, I'm thinking in the last 10 years, we've only maybe had one or two in rural Minnehaha County that were non-compliant. And maybe my memory is totally off.
Good morning, Commissioners. Captain Josh Phillips here with Minnehaha County. Since, about the last 10 years, I would say, for rural Minnehaha County, we've had three this year, none in 2020, two in 2019, none in 2018, two in 2017, and then three in 2014. So, pretty close to that 10 mark like you suggested. So.
Okay.
Couple of those years, there was no failures. And then due to COVID last year, we didn't do any compliance checks. So.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. I guess I have one comment. 15% failed, which is not great, but just want to thank the 85% those that did pass. They did a good job. I did see one business owner kind of complaining that he didn't think he should be held accountable for his employee selling alcohol. And I'm telling you right now, that's just a totally wrong attitude. You are responsible for what happens in your business. And I hope that those communities that issue those licenses hold those businesses accountable. We can only be accountable for the ones in rural Minnehaha County. But if you have a community that's selling alcohol to minors, or businesses, the business needs to be held accountable as well as the employees. It's everybody's job to be in this together. So, thank you for what you guys do. And, and thank you to those that did the right thing and trained their employees well and held their employees accountable for selling alcohol to minors.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. A briefing on the canceled invitation for bids on Project MC 1710. Good morning, Steve.
Good morning, Commissioners. Steve Groan, Highway Superintendent. Last week, we had a bid opening scheduled on Wednesday for Minnehaha County Project 17-10, the reconstruction of County Road 149. On the advice of the State's Attorney Office, we're requesting to cancel that solicitation for bids and re-advertize for a bid opening on December 16th.
Questions for Steve?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Oh, it's just a briefing. I apologize.
No, no.
Do you need a motion?
We have to rescind the.
Yeah.
Yeah, bid opening.
So, I make a motion.
And I second it.
All right. Motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Steve. And moving on to the 2021 Bridge Inspection Program.
Once again, Steve Groan, Highway Superintendent. South Dakota DOT requires our bridge, Bridge Inspection Program to be presented to the commission on an annual basis. This year, Civil Design, Inc. inspected about 87 of our structures. They do, bought half of our bridges every other year, every year. We have met, our operations and engineering team has met with Chris and gone through every structure inspected this year. So we're working on a maintenance and a replacement program. But Chris is here to give you a presentation.
Morning, Commissioners. Chris Brozek, Vice President at Civil Design, Inc. As Steve had mentioned, we contract with the DOT after you guys have provided your authorization to hire Civil Design to do bridge inspections each year for Minnehaha County. And if you actually want to go to the next slide, I will get into it. So as Steve mentioned, this year, we had to do 87 bridge inspections in the county. Most of those took place west of Highway 115. And all of those 87 are existing structures currently in service. And of those 87, 11 are currently posted structures with weight restrictions. The county this year didn't have any new construction of, of any bridges this year, so we didn't have to do any initial inspections. Just as a refresher, any bridge in the county is on this MBIS structure system if it's over 20 feet in length. So anything that would be less than 20 feet in length, we would not be performing inspection on as part of this process. Bridges are typically inspected every 24 months. Some box culverts are upwards of 48 months, depending on certain criteria. In addition to fieldwork, we go out and do the onsite inspection. And then we also do office work, which involves taking that information we've gathered, looking for defects or issues with any structure, provide and generate a bridge inspection report. And if any defect warrants any potential load restriction, we also perform load rating analysis on that structure to, to provide accurate weight restriction. In addition to that, then, we also, as Steve mentioned, meet with the Highway Department to go through the inspection findings in full detail. If you want to go to the next slide, then. This is just a general county map, and it's a little hard to see on the screen, but there are highlighted structures. And again, mainly west of Highway 115. And this year, on this inspection cycle, there are more of your smaller structures on Skunk Creek, Willow Creek, the Diversion Ditch, and then also Silver Creek. All of the, you know, more typical larger structures on the Big Sioux, Split Rock Creek, those would be handled next inspection cycle. Next slide. So as I mentioned, 87 structures were inspected in 2021. 11 of those currently do have a, a load posting on those structures. We did have one structure with a current posting. The structure identified is located in northeastern Minnehaha County on 247th Street between 41st Avenue and County Highway 113. This with the continued deterioration that we observed warranted an additional restriction on load posting going from 13 and 20 tons posting to a 10-ton, 15-ton load posting, depending on the truck type. In addition, we also had a finding of one structure that currently does not have a load restriction. That warranted a, a posting, and that was determined, I believe, in late June. And then the county is required to go through a load posting process within 30 days per the federal highway requirements. And that count, that structure was located on County Highway 118, just west of the Tri Valley School District. And that posting was set for 18 tons and 30 tons for each respective single unit combination truck. Here's just a brief overview as a refresher of what we provide as this criteria is the fieldwork. We go through an inspection process where we start looking at, before we even get to the bridge, we look at the approaches. We look at signage to make sure all of that is in working order. And then from there, start our work on the actual bridge deck itself, looking at the deck for any defects, the barrier rail, make sure there's no physical damage there. And as well as a deck delamination survey, which is that bottom center picture, which is basically a chain drag method to help us identify any specific defects on the bridge itself. From there, then we start working on the underside of the bridge, looking at the underside of the deck, any superstructure elements such as beams or slab units, and then kind of concluding the overall structural components with the substructure, which would be your main pier supports and/or abutment supports at the ends of the bridge. We also do an investigation of bank stabilization under the bridge and beyond the bridge along the channel banks, and also do a channel profile of each structure to make sure that there isn't any significant scour occurring on any, on any individual structure. And we try to track that over a period of multiple years so we can track that year after year that we're out there, just so we have a basis of where it's been and where it may be going to help document any of those scour issues. And that's that picture on the right-hand side, kind of just showing a general channel profile that we develop. Next slide, please. And then office work, we, we prepare a bridge inspection report. And this is just a, a general, few sheets out of a bridge inspection report itself, cover sheet to show the overall physical location. The next sheet would provide any posting recommendations if there are any, any maintenance repair items that the County Highway Department should be aware of and consider with their maintenance program. And then it starts getting into the physical components of the deck, the superstructure, substructure, and, and breaks those, those items down into more detail. Next slide. Then from there, we, we also do what's called an element level inspection, which breaks down each component into quantities so that we can quantify the defects and better determine, you know, maybe percentage-wise or overall quantity of the bridge that is actually deteriorating. With that, too, then, is a lot of photo documentation that helps identify the defects themselves. And/or if it's, you know, in good condition, we can document that it, it was in good condition at the time. And then also channel profile within the inspection report as well for each bridge. Next slide. Finally, after each bridge has a bridge inspection report completed, we also prepare a summary, just to give a high overview for the county to look at a specific bridge without digging through the, the details of the inspection report and lay out what its current load postings are, if there are any, if there were any changes this year, what the overall sufficiency rating of that bridges. And sufficiency rating is just a rating on a scale of one to 100, 100 being, you know, a brand-new structure, a one being, you know, severely damaged or deteriorated and in need of replacement. And so overall, countywide, the sufficiency ratings generally are in very good condition. But there are some select structures out there that are in need of, of future replacement. And, you know, talking with the Highway Department yesterday, we've identified about three or four of them on the paved system, on the county highway system that, you know, aren't there yet but need to be considered within the next few years for future replacement because of the deterioration we have been, been observing. In addition to the summary sheets, then, as I mentioned, going through things in detail with the Highway Department, we did that yesterday. We also help them identify any major repair items in addition to just your regular maintenance items. And then also assist the, the Highway Department with any potential future structure replacements and/or Bridge Improvement Grant opportunities that they may have. This is just a quick summary of what has been considered already for bridge improvement grants within Minnehaha County. Two structures recently were awarded a bridge improvement grant for preliminary engineering. This is a hydraulic analysis phase to help identify, you know, what type of structure could be replaced on either location in the future. Additionally, the Highway Department put in for two preservation grants where we would just be doing rehabilitation of two select structures and those have been considered as well and, and they will make the final determination on whether they proceed with an actual final application by the end of this year. And then also any future replacement construction grants are also being considered by the Highway Department at this time. With that, I'll, I'll take any questions that you guys may have.
Questions for Chris or Steve? Very detailed. Thank you very much, Chris.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
All right. Moving on to authorize the Southeastern Council of Governments to apply for the BRIC program grant on behalf of Minnehaha and Lincoln County. Good morning, Jason.
Good morning. Jason Guerman, Minnehaha County Emergency Management. I'm here today to ask you to authorize CCOG to apply for the BRIC program. The BRIC program was formerly known as pre-disaster mitigation program. FEMA decided to change the name this year and kind of changed some of the process. I'm new to this. Maybe some of you have heard about it in previously, but basically this allows us to apply for disaster relief funds if we have a presidential disaster declared in Minnehaha and Lincoln County. So, that's kind of the quick version of what this is.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Hybler, second by Bender. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. And Lori Montes, authorized Chair to sign sub-recipient agreement with South Dakota Housing Development Authority to allow Minnehaha County Human Services to disperse allotted South Dakota CARES funds.
Good morning, Commission Lori Montes, Human Services. Here this morning just to get authorization for the Chair to sign a sub-recipient agreement with the South Dakota Housing Development Authority in dispersing the South Dakota CARES funds. You know, the, the state has been doing those funds since mid-year last year. They, for 2021, they have sent out to people in need about $14 million, but they have millions of dollars left to get into the hands of people in need in our, in our county. And Minnehaha County happens to be, maybe not surprisingly, the county of the largest number of requests. And so, the state has asked if we would be interested in helping to get those funds into the hands of people in need in Minnehaha County and Lincoln County.
Commissioner Benega? Lori, how do you let people know that those are available?
Well, the state, I think, as part of their funding, has flyers that they've created and they send it out to all of their partner agencies. It's put online, it's on their website. I guess I am not sure of all of their media efforts, but we do have it posted at our office and we certainly refer the bulk of our people, actually, to South Dakota CARES. So it will kind of allow us to have some insight into that program as well and to figure out if somebody is eligible for county funds, which our income limit for assistance is quite low. As you guys probably know, 100% of federal poverty level, which comes out to just over $1,000 a month or $12,000 a year. So somebody has to be very low-income to qualify for county services. The South Dakota CARES funds has a much higher income limit. They base it on area median income of 80%, so that allows an individual to earn about $46,000. So that's a great group of people that aren't reached through county assistance now that we would partner to help provide assistance for through those funds.
I guess, to be very blunt, I think we need to find a way to enhance that distribution because the people who need it the most don't have, quote, virtual abilities to find those There's a lot of people that could use that and unfortunately, I don't think they have any clue, even when the information's provided publicly, it almost needs to find a way to get directly to the individuals themselves.
Right.
So.
Right. I think when we're notifying.
I don't have all the answers, but I do know that there's a lot of resources that aren't being tapped.
Yeah, for sure. And there's a lot of people who call our office that we refer that direction that have not heard of those funds or know nothing about them, so.
All righty. Have you noticed, then, the county funds not being used as rapidly because of these funds being available?
Yes.
Good.
Yes. In some respects, it's people who wouldn't qualify for our funds anyway, but there are certainly those who do meet our eligibility criteria that are being assisted through South Dakota CARES as well.
Good.
I think the landlords are probably doing a fairly good job. They've been informed a fair amount. Again, you know, some landlords are better than others at dispersing information to their tenants. So, we have worked with several landlords too, to try and inform them of South Dakota CARES and getting people, especially those that are quite a ways behind, that are going to need more than the non-partner agencies or nonprofit agencies and county to assist them in getting caught up with rent and utilities.
Okay. Other questions for Lori? Motion?
Motion.
Who, Benega?
Second, Bender.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Lori.
Great, thank you.
You bet. Moving on, we got Tyler with authorized Chair to sign 2022 Sioux Falls Metropolitan Planning MPO Agreement between Minnehaha County and the Southeastern Council of Governments.
Good morning, Tyler Klett, Commission Office. Each year, the county enters into an agreement with CCOG as part of the Metropolitan Planning Organization. These shared planning efforts include local government entities from around the area. In addition to the joint planning activities, the agreement also acts as a way for CCOG to distribute federal grant dollars for projects that do impact Minnehaha County. This year, the 81% federal match is $50,000, $50,285, which is recognized in that attachment for this item. The action requested, again, is for the Commission to approve the 2022 CCOG MPO agreement.
Motion to approve. Hybler.
Second, Benega. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. And Tyler standing up for the agreement between the Tegra Group Incorporated in Minnehaha County for consulting services for the JDC.
Again, Tyler Klett, Commission Office. Attached to this item, you'll find the proposed contract for owner's representative services for the conceptual validation of the Minnehaha County Juvenile Detention Center. Tegra will act as the owner's representative for Minnehaha County and their responsibilities will include a feasibility study, which includes project team assembly, coordinating benchmark tours, conceptual design, existing building condition assessment, disruption avoidance planning, creating a master budget and schedule, and then a final presentation to you, the Commission. Exhibit A outlines the process a little more in-depth. Overall, the county will pay Tegra a fixed fee of $8,650 a month for six months of work totaling $51,900 for their services. And the action again requested would be to approve that contract with Tegra.
Comments, questions? Commissioner Bender?
Glad to say we had an opportunity to visit at length about this option at a building, our last building committee. I think it's a very good use of our funds to try to help us figure out what our needs are and then develop a plan to address those. So, I'd, I'd make a motion to approve.
Second. Hybler.
Motion and a second, and I would agree that our relationship with Tegra Group has been nothing but stellar and helped save the county quite a bit of money, time, and effort and we got the experts, so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. All righty. Moving on, the sales agreement of AVI Systems, Inc. for relocating and upgrading the Commission meeting recording systems part of the admin building remodel.
Tyler Klett, Commission Office, again. As part of the administration building remodeling project, there's going to be some significant changes made to the technology and infrastructure of the Commission chamber and the overflow room, overflow room. AVI Systems will be moving and reinstalling any existing equipment that can be reused in the new rooms on the third floor of the administration building. Some of the highlights of the upgrades include new TV screens, advanced video software, and new projector screen controlling systems. We anticipate being able to use the American Recovery Plan Act funding for these expenses and the total contract is $170,000, 170,164.72, and the request is for the, authorize the Chair to sign the agreement with AVI Services.
We've also talked about this extensively in the past, so I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Hybler, second by Bender. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler. Okay, liaison reports. Commissioner Bender?
Would just note that we continue to work on the proposal from the State's Attorney's Office for purchase of new software. We have gotten a report back from Barry Dunn and we're working through that report and trying to gather final information so we can bring that forward to the Commission. I just wanted to give you guys an update that we're still working on it, so.
Commissioner Hybler?
I just had a Zoom call yesterday with the State Board that oversees Senate Bill 73, which was the mental health board, or bill from several years ago. I sent each one of the Commissioners a draft form of their report and I'm sure that the finalized report will be out soon, just a lot of good things continuing to happen, happen with how we deal with mental illness in our criminal justice side and just across the state. And so, some, again, good information in there and that should be on their website soon, so.
You already sent that email?
Carol was going to send it with a copy of that, so if you didn't get it, you'll probably get it today because she was supposed to send it yesterday.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hybler and I this morning met with the Public Defender's Office Advisory Board and we had a fairly long discussion about the project that you had mentioned, Commissioner Bender, Barry Dunn, and the software and, you know, I think we're taking the right approach and with everything that's going on, thank you for that work. There are concerns that I think are being addressed and just keep, keep things moving forward, so, yeah. Otherwise, the Public Defender's Board meeting went well. They're well within their budget. They're eager to have their basement finished so they can have everybody with their own office and, yeah, I think things are going quite well with the Public Defender's Office. Yesterday, Carol Muller and I attended the multicultural centers listening session for the process to begin hiring a new executive director. I bet there were 30 people there from the community. The mayor's office was represented. I could only stick around for an hour. I think it went just a little bit beyond one, but some very good input from the community into the process of who the multicultural center is going to be looking for or the type of person, I guess. And so, it's good to see the public getting involved in that and that community embracing that search, so. I think that's all I've got. Tyler, did you have anything on the meeting? Did you attend the one for Sioux Metro Growth Alliance? Anything to report on that? Apologize for putting you on the spot.
No problem. Tyler Klett, Commission Office. I did attend the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance's monthly meeting. To be honest, I don't know what I can share and not share, but some of the highlights, I know they are planning and excited to move to a different office space in the future. Looking at hiring another staff member as they continue to add communities. Some of those are being added, I believe, are Salem and getting much more involved with Lenox and some other communities which are in Lincoln County, but just to kind of highlight how they're growing as, as an organization.
All righty. Any new business? Old business? Look for a motion to go to recess.
That's my motion. Second.
Motion by Bender, second by Hybler. We will recess until 10:15. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign. We are at recess.[1793.32][1793.32]